Welcome to the Fortuna City Council meeting for January 16th. Would you join me for the flag salute, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Councilmember Conley.
Present.
Councilmember Losi.
Here.
Councilmember Mobley.
Here.
Mayor Protam Johnson.
Here.
Mayor Trent.
Here.
Okay, we have a proclamation. Is that the next thing here? Yes.
This proclamation is for National Mentoring Month for January 2024. Whereas this Big Brothers, Big Sisters of the North Coast CASA of Humboldt and Boys and Girls Club of the Redwoods celebrate the 139th combined years or 139 combined years of service provided to the youth in Humboldt County. Together, it is recognized that the future of Humboldt County rests on the success of its youth. Whereas a mentor is a caring, consistent presence who devotes time to help a young person develop personal strength and achieve their potential through a structured and trusting relationship. Whereas quality mentoring encourages positive choices, promotes self-esteem, supports academic achievement, and introduces young people to new ideas. Whereas research shows that young people matched with a caring adult through a quality mentoring program are 55% more likely to be enrolled in college, 81% more likely to report participating regularly in extracurricular activities and sports, 78% more likely to volunteer, and twice as likely to say they held a leadership position than those who did not have a mentor. Whereas youth development experts agree that mentoring is critical to the social, emotional, and cognitive development of youth, helping them navigate the path to adulthood more successfully. Whereas our community has a number of community volunteers, teachers, advocates, and many others who support the mentoring movement and work selflessly to improve our children's odds for success. Now therefore Tammy Trent, by virtue of the authority vested in her, Mayor of the City of Fortuna, proclaimed that January 2024 is National Mentoring Month in the City of Fortuna and thanks all of our local heroes who participate in quality mentoring programs to equip our youth with the tools to lead healthy and productive lives. The city council also calls on residents to help close the gap between the availability of mentors and the number of children facing challenging circumstances who would love to spend time with a Big Brother, Big Sister, CASA Advocate, or Boys and Girls Club of the Redwoods mentor. It takes little to be big for National Mentoring Month. This is signed the 16th day of January 2024, the City of Fortuna, Tammy Trent, Mayor, and she's going to present that proclamation.
And this is going to be presented to Florence Park Executive Director of Big Brothers and Big Sisters of America.
Hi, guys. Good evening. My name's Heather Markson. I'm the Program Specialist at Big Brothers, Big Sisters. I've been with Big Brothers, Big Sisters for a year in February in this position, but before that I was a volunteer and an advocate for eight years. And I guess my inspiration to be part of the program was I was mentored when I was a teenager. I was actually a homeless teen. And it wasn't through the Big Brothers, Big Sisters program, but his impact on my life changed the trajectory of where I was going to go. And he really just helped me in a moment that I really needed it. And he was an adult that I could go to, and he never showed judgment and was always just so supportive and positive. And I've kind of taken that along with me. And I love talking about him because he did have such a big impact on my life. So as I became an adult and I was given opportunities to volunteer in the community, when I heard of Big Brothers, Big Sisters, it just really resonated with me and my mission in life, and it was my opportunity to advocate. But there are other ways that you can. I have notes. I just need to pull them up. Your organization or company can also support mentoring through 2024 by becoming a defender of potential. You can always be part of our It Takes Little to Be Big campaign, and you can join by being part of our fundraising events, donating in-kind gifts, space for advanced office equipment, gift certificates, sharing our posts for specials events on your Facebook page. We also have an Instagram. Sponsoring a mentoring event, having a speech to your employees about becoming mentors, and posting our mentor flyer at your workplace. We currently, on Friday and Saturday of March 1st and 2nd, we're going to have Bowl for Kids' Sake, and that's our biggest fundraiser of the year. And it's where you can get your friends, family, colleagues together, and you join a team, and you fundraise money for our organization and for mentoring. And then at the end, at Bowl for Kids' Sake, you get to come, get to celebrate, and it's really just like one big party. It's going to be the roaring twenties, and we're really excited about it. And I just want you guys to think of who mentored you when you were young, and if you have children, who are their mentors, and just really know that it doesn't take, it really doesn't take a lot. It's really the micro moments with the little person that makes the difference. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mentoring means to me, what mentoring means to me is having someone that's very nice and kind to you and is always there for you when you need somebody to hold and hug, and also someone that can give you information that you didn't know yet. Like if you didn't know what two plus two was, you may have had a friend that told you, oh, two plus two is four, and this is how you can figure it out.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Florence Parks. I'm the Executive Director for Big Brothers, Big Sisters of the North Coast. And in my reflection of my joining the agencies here in Humboldt County, I look back on the five years that I've gotten to serve the youth in this community and the volunteers. And when I think of the impact that we've made as an agency, it's not just the kids that get to experience the mentoring relationship. Civic engagement is something that resonates in each of us, and when we participate in our community, it really brings out the best in each of us, and it makes us feel more connected and collective as a culture and community. So Big Brothers, Big Sisters has been here, serving this community for 54-plus years. And in that time, we have served more than 4,000 youth with one-to-one mentoring opportunities. And there are 24,000 school-age youth today that need our support. So we're not done yet until we can get to the point where we're supporting the majority, the lion's share of the youth in our community that want and need mentors, not just the kids that might be at promise, or some say at risk, but the kids, all of our kids deserve mentors. And not all of us have protective webs. And so that's why programs like mine get to step in the gap and provide these mentoring opportunities for both the community and also the young person and the family. And I am honored to be able to lead this agency at this time, but we are looking for more volunteers in the Eel Valley area. We have two school sites here that we participate in, and we have an MOU with the College of the Redwoods so that we can have more mentors here. But the truth is, there's not enough volunteers in order for us to make the impact that we need to make here. So I implore those that are listening in the audience and those that are viewing from their homes and other places of business to get involved in mentoring in your community. It doesn't have to be through Big Brothers, Big Sisters. As Tammy shared and Mike read so eloquently, we have several different programs that are doing mentoring. You might notice in your church that there's a youth mentoring program. You might notice that CASA has a more formalized way that you can get involved. Or you might notice that your Boys and Girls Club has opportunities for you to come by and do different activities or different events. And as Heather shared, there is an enormous amount of ways that we can all take up the mantle of mentoring, but not one is more important than being present and giving visibility to our youth. Because when we can do that, our youth understand where their place is in our community, and they take that up, and they pull, and then they're the ones that are projecting us forward into the future. So we do want to invest in our young people, but young people are not the only ones that need mentoring. So you might notice that there's an employee at your place of business or a colleague that needs a little support. Having those mentoring communities and asking, especially if you are someone who wants to progress in your career, for new mentors, someone older or more wise, or someone that just has that spark of life that you hope to have, ask that person to be your mentor and see where that takes you. Because as we do that, as we put ourselves out there and put ourselves in a place where we have that spontaneous mentoring that we're all committed to in the community, then our children's needs will be met. There will be more people that mentor our youth because of their engagement, because they were mentored, and they can think of the times more recent than their childhood that they've been invested in. Big Brothers, Big Sisters launched this year a Lunch Buddies program. It takes 30 minutes to mentor. So as was shared both by Tammy and Heather, it doesn't take a lot to get engaged and get started today. So Lunch Buddies is 30 minutes. You can go to your school for lunch and sit with a young person. That makes the difference in the school climate. Just having another adult present at lunch makes a big difference, but you give that cool factor to that young person who you're sitting with. So just those small moments. And in this summer, our goal is to launch a program, our pilot program for Big Futures. Two years ago, Big Brothers, Big Sisters expanded the age that we serve to include youth that are from the age of 18 to 25. Yes, our young people still need our support, even in their early years, in their early twenties. And so with Big Futures, we hope that we can do even more for our community and wrap our arms around the communities that need us most. So thank you for your time tonight. Thank you for making the investment, led by Mayor Trent, to invest in mentoring here in Fortuna and throughout the Eel Valley. And please call on Big Brothers, Big Sisters if there's something that you'd like to do regionally, a grassroots effort. We want to be there to expand mentoring throughout this region. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, now we have an introduction of street maintenance worker, too, Brandon Craig.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. Tonight, I want to introduce you to Brandon Craig. He born, raised in Garville, Southern Humboldt area, moved up here with his family about 15 years ago, and he's been like a handyman, a little bit of logging, a little bit of this, but he's been a great asset to come to our team. And so I just want to introduce you to Brandon. Thank you.
Hey, guys. Nice to meet you. I've met a few of you as time goes on. I've been here about a month or so, but I look forward to working with all of you and joining the team and being a part of Fortuna. So thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you, and welcome to Fortuna. Okay, our utilities worker, we're postponing that till the next meeting. And now we'll have the police department's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity tonight to present the report. This will be our annual report for 2023. And throughout this report, we're going to highlight some of the stats and the accomplishments that we've had in the department. Next slide, please. We are pleased to share our proactive enforcement has increased in 2023. So in this slide, you'll see a comparison with 2022 and 2023. And with this increase that we've seen, we've had some significant benefits, which we're very happy to show here. Next slide, please. We've seen a decrease in crime. In 2022 to 2023, we have seen a decrease in crime, with the exception of one outlier. We did have a murder-suicide within 2023, but other than that, we have seen a reduction. These crimes that are shown here are crimes that are tracked and reported through the NIBR system, which is the National Incident-Based Reporting System. And these are stats that are tracked by the government that are crimes within communities. Next slide, please. Another metric that is used to track violence and crimes within communities is domestic violence. And as you see here, we're pleased to see that the number is declining, and we are looking forward to continue to decline. Excellent. Our public safety dispatchers answered 6,572 911 calls last year. That averages out to 18 911 calls a day. We definitely take our share of calls here within the community, and we're very proud of our dispatchers. Next slide, please. We all know our K-9 team, K-9 Blitz, and their handlers, FTO Stevens and Officer Moore. Next slide, please. In the photo shown with K-9 Kane and the narcotics, that is 12 pounds of methamphetamine that was seized here in Fortuna. And together, our Canines have seized over 20 pounds of narcotics this year. They were deployed many times, successfully resolving high-risk situations through voluntary compliance. And I know I'd comply if I was facing them. Next slide, please. Our problem-oriented policing team, our POP team, they are comprised of several different members throughout our department, our detectives, our sergeants, our school resource officer, our patrol officers. And they come together and conduct operations within the city to really address crime and quality life issues. And as you can see from this slide here, they've had some pretty impressive numbers throughout the year. Next slide, please. We have a drone team in Fortuna, and it has been very successful. We have three trained drone and certified pilots. They assist with crime scene photos and videos, search warrant operations, locating suspects. And one highlight this year is that we utilized the drone to successfully track and apprehend a suspect that brandished a knife at officers. So that was a very successful operation. And in one of the photos I'd like to highlight, you'll see that it's in infrared. The cameras on there do have other capabilities, and they're a very useful tool for us. Next slide, please. As you look at this slide, you see our detectives. They've investigated 164 investigations. You know, they handle various major crimes throughout the city. But instead of focusing on their stats, I think an important fact is an example of one of the cases they handled and how they expand off of the cases they work. This year, they handled a drive-by shooting, an attempted homicide within town. They successfully resolved that investigation. They made arrests, but the detectives took it further. They took the evidence from that matter, and they were able to pursue additional cases and recover several firearms off of juveniles throughout our city and through our neighboring cities. So the detectives are a very useful tool for our agency. Next slide, please. School resource officer. We all love the school resource officer. He's involved in lots of different things. You can see he shopped with a cop there, photo. He's reinstituted the Explorer Program, served six schools within the community. I'm happy to say that the schools are very pleased with the officer and the position. Just last week, the school, high school decorated his office door, expressing their gratitude for the job that he does, and we're very happy with that. Next slide, please. The Humboldt County Drug Task Force. Our department, through Measure Z, is able to have an agent assigned with the Humboldt County Drug Task Force. When you look at this slide, none of these photos are duplicates, and all of these things that you see here, these weapons and these narcotics, were seized within the Fortuna area over the last year. So as you can see, the Humboldt County Drug Task Force agent having one out there is making a very profound impact within our area, and we're very pleased to have the support of Measure Z with that. Next slide, please. Our community service officers, they handle a wide variety of calls. We have one full-time and one part-time. One of the highlights, you know, looking at this, is, you know, they've been able to successfully take 225 lost or abandoned animals off of the street and make sure that they were safely removed and assisted. They also address parking and other calls as well. Next slide, please. Our code compliance officer, part-time code compliance officer, and still managed to handle 233 calls for service. He addresses blighted properties, abandoned vehicles. He keeps our city beautiful, and, you know, he also has dealt with shopping carts this year. Next slide, please. So our staff has put a lot of time in on this project, and we are grateful for the support of the council on our new police facility. As you can see in these pictures, construction is moving along. We're very much looking forward to moving in, but this has been a big accomplishment in 2023 to progress this far. And we'd like to give a special thanks to our Public Works Director, Brendan Byrd. He has put in a ton of effort on ensuring that this project is continuing to move forward. We're very grateful for that. Next slide, please. One of the focuses of the department is our employee development. So with our employee development, you know, we're looking ahead at the future and succession planning. We're putting a lot of focus on our supervisors. As you can see there, we sent supervisors to various trainings, developing people. One of the highlights is that Sergeant Finney, just this last week, graduated the Sherman Block Supervisory Leadership Institute, an eight-month program that's facilitated by post. And just today, I opened a letter addressed to the chief, and that letter was from one of the instructors, and it was a commendation letter written by one of the instructors, accommodating, you know, expressing their gratitude for what a great job that Sergeant Finney did within that program. So we're very proud of that. Next slide, please. You know, we've continued to pursue grant funding, and we're constantly looking for ways to accomplish our mission while lessening the financial impact on the city. We're grateful for the funding that we've managed to get, and we're continuing to look for more. Next slide, please. And, you know, this report tonight, it showcases our people, our employees, you know, the amazing work they do. We have the stats, you know, we do here in Fortuna, and we see the things we do because of them. And to that, we thank them, and we thank you for your support. And if there's any questions, I'm available.
Any questions? No? Thank you very much for that report.
Thank you.
Our next one is from our fire chief.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members. It's always an honor to come before you and give you a rundown of what's going on at the fire department. Much like Lieutenant, I'm going to go through our stats for 2023 and talk a little bit about those. It's ironic how many similar things we have in my report and yours. Our call volume for last year was 1,461 calls. That's down 39 from the year before, but it is still right around our average. 65.4% of that was medical. We had 81 fires, 21 of those structure fires. Rescue and medical, we had 910 calls, 828 of those medicals, 82 of those traffic collisions. Hazardous conditions, those are your power lines down, your gas leaks, things like that. We had 39 of those. Service calls, 118. Those could be anything from we're changing your batteries in your smoke detector to you smell something funny. Good intent calls, those are our smoke checks. That's where somebody sees smoke, smells smoke, and thinks we should go find out where it's at and whether it's legal to be continuing to happen. So, you know, those are a pretty common occurrence in our daily activity. And then false alarms and false calls, 105 of those turned out to be not as reported. There are a lot of, I don't want to say, there are a lot of alarm systems that don't function correctly. And so we find that out by it going off and us getting there and not having a fire be there. So those are a wrap-up of all of our calls for the year. Our planning and how we're moving forward, we are in the same struggle that every fire department in America is in getting people to join. Less and less people are volunteering for everything, and that includes fire. So that's a constant struggle for us every year to recruit new people, to keep and retain our old people. And so, you know, we're, our goal is always to have a volunteer department in this town. I'm a believer in that. I think it works. I just don't know how much longer that's going to work with the rest of the folks that don't want to participate and volunteer. We are expanding our resident program. Every station we have has resident quarters, so we are working with our colleges, our universities, to recruit some of their students, to offer them a place to live while they go to school. We have grant scholarship programs for those same folks, to encourage them to be a resident at one of our stations, and with that comes call volume for us. They would staff a certain amount of shifts for us, and so we're continuing to work on those programs. We as well are in the grant business, trying to find as much funding as we can to take some of that burden off of our taxpayers as well, and we continue to look down every path that we can to find grant funding. Where we've expanded some of our stuff in the recent years, we do have room for others in our medical staffing program. All you have to have is CPR and first aid, and we'll put you with one of our experienced folks, and you can see exactly what it's like to respond to Sally Sals to deal with a difficulty breathing call. So it used to be you had to be a member of the department to participate in that, and now we have a support group that allows some of those folks to, maybe I don't want to join the whole fire department, but I have medical background. We have nurses that are in town. Sometimes we have visiting nurses that want to get a chance to see what it's like before you bring that patient to the ER, and they'll staff a few shifts with us. And so that wasn't available a couple of years ago, and we've opened up our programs to allow some of those unique situations that happen, where they might want to see what it's like out there, you know, in the real world, as opposed to what they see on TV. I wish they were still here. Our junior firefighting program is alive and well. It's one of our mentoring programs. It's one of, we've seen great success through our junior firefighter program. We've seen some of them become firefighters. We've seen some of them join the military. A lot of them go off to college and universities, but we've had a lot of success with our junior firefighter program. Our CERT program, our CERT program took off when we put the right person in charge of it. We now have the only teen CERT program in the county. And so it needed a home, it needed some funding, and we're that home and we're that funding for that program, and I hope that that continues, because that's a, every community needs a strong CERT program, because when the big one happens, when we're all busy doing other stuff, I need somebody else to deal with that broken arm. I need somebody else to deal with that, how to turn a gas meter off. And so that's certainly right up the, the CERT program's alley. And so we're, we're excited about that. And then with our support group, we're able to take on, we had somebody call the other day that just wanted to, to know if we needed somebody to do some filing. Yes, that, that, every day, you can come to my office and file. And so, again, a couple of years ago, we didn't have that support program. And so there was no real way for these people to volunteer when they'd call and do that. We had a, a person call the other day that just wants to sweep floors. So I've, I've got that person lined up with our, our schedule on when we do that. And by gosh, we'll, we'll take another person. So, you know, our support program is, is, is unique and new, but I think it's going to add value to what we offer our community and another way for folks to volunteer where they maybe thought that they weren't able to in the past. Update on our Rona Ville station. It's kind of a joke, who's going to get done first? I think you're, you're going to get done first. I'm not sure with my sidewalk problem that, that we're going to beat you there. I'm hoping to be in, they told us by Christmas, that's obviously not going to happen. I was up there today. I think realistically, maybe by the end of February, you'll see us transition from the Camp tonight station on School Street to the new station two out on Rona Ville Road. Excuse me. And I've talked to you guys before about why we did that and what the, what the move was, was for. The, the, the structure is a beautiful structure. When it's done, I think we're all going to be proud to have that in our community. I think the neighbors are happy with the, the look of it so far. I think everybody thought it was a really big house with a really big RV building next to it. But it, it is a beautiful facility. And once again, it does have living quarters. So, you know, if we, if we end up with an abundance of people that want to be residents, we certainly have facilities for them to, to go into. We'll probably plan an open house sometime after we, we, we get it up and we get everything moved into there. People have asked what we're going to do with the old station. Currently, we're going to keep it. Right now, it's going to be used to store our antique apparatus. Our antique apparatus right now is in Hydesville. And every time we have an event, we bring that down for, that's a long trip for a 1927 or a 1937. So having it in Camp tonight would be a little bit easier to get it downtown to do the lighted parade or whatever other events that, that we use that for. And that, that, that is our last big infrastructure project, our, our station two. We have upgraded Hydesville. The current main headquarters is 25 years old, but still functioning fine. We have the training facility behind it now. The only thing left to add is a classroom, and, and that was going to happen in Measure Z funding. That may or may not happen now. But that's, that's our only thing left to do is to, to build a, a training classroom that goes along with the, the training tower and the training facility. So with that, I will end my, my report and, and open it up for any questions you might have. Mike always has a question.
Not so much a question, it's just to throw some information out there. I have talked to several people within the community over the last six months, nine months. And they find it surprising that there is a resident quarters program that, that your fire department is running. So then I, you know, let them know that this is something. So it might not be a, I, I know that you probably do put that out in the community, put press releases out, but it might be something that you might, you know, think about additional, you know, correspondence out there and press releases. I just see that as a real plus to have people 24/7 at the fire department to be able to respond on these medical calls and, you know, any of those calls that they routinely respond to.
I, I agree 100%. I, it, it adds value to our department. The, the part we've run into, the problem that we ran into, the success of our program has bred other programs. And so now Blue Lake Fire has a program. Arcade Fire is talking about, you know, starting theirs back up again. And Smo Peninsular has always had one. And so people look at drive time from Fortuna to HSU, and they choose one of the other options. So we went out on the CR students, so we do went out, went out on that. But, you know, we, we certainly can do a, a, an increased job of getting that out, that program out there because it is a, it is a great program that is a win-win. You know, they get a place to stay and, and we get, we get obviously some medical shifts out of those people.
Absolutely. Good.
Any other questions?
I'd just comment on the training facility and how it's come about and its use. And then the Eel River CERT rescue is, I mean, those are two gems also.
Yeah, and we, we've, we've found that our training facility has exceeded what we thought it was going to be as far as used by multiple agencies. CHP called me maybe a year ago, year and a half ago, and asked if they could use it for live round, you know, SIMs, SIMs rounds and, and, you know, taking people out of vehicles, taking people out of buildings. And I said, sure. I said, knock yourself out. And so they have continued to use it for that. Cal Fire will come down and use it occasionally when they need some, some space to use it. Fortuna PD has been there with their K9s. And so it truly is working like we thought it was, would, and if not exceeded that. Because it, it's a great space. You can, you can lock the gates and, and nobody can bother you. You're kind of tucked away to do your own thing. You know, it's, 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 it's nice to have in our community. Plus, all those people buy lunches and, and gas and everything else in our city. So, you know, I'm, I'm always willing to give up our facilities to get a group of people into our community because they got to go somewhere at lunchtime and they're not leaving our town to do it. So, you know, anytime we can get a group of folks to use our facilities, we're all about it. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm just going to add a little here that for both the police department and the fire department, you all heard how important those Measure Z funds are to both of those departments and, and what good they did to it. With the tax, the tax base down this last year was tough with Measure Z. Michelle Bichnall, our supervisor, fought very hard to get those funds and was backed up by Rex strongly too. So if you see the supervisors out, thank them, any of them, thank them for funding these because these are really important for our community.
I agree.
Thank you, Michelle.
I agree. Thank you, Michelle.
Okay. Now we'll move to the oral comments by the public. Anybody in the public has anything to say? You have, that's not on the agenda. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I will be brief. I just wanted to provide a little bit of an update from the storm event that we experienced this last Saturday here in Fortuna, which depending on which rain gauge you look at or who you talk to, is somewhere between two and a half and, and three inches and a little over 18 hours, I believe. I just want to provide the update that, you know, we, we saw it coming ahead of time. We were planning for it in Public Works. We had staff across all of our Public Works divisions working, working on Saturday and even some on Sunday, addressing some cleanup items. I'm happy to report we had no major issues and no major property damage, other than a little bit of localized flooding here and there that we had to deal with. And I'm very appreciative to all of our staff that, you know, put in the extra time on a weekend to make sure that we were able to handle things as they were happening or before and not react to, reacting to them long after they had, they had begun. On that note, I wanted to acknowledge a project I imagine we're still all very familiar with, and that's the Rona Creek Flood Control Project that, you know, happened over a period of years, culminating with Hillside Creek in 2019, I believe it was. So this is actually the first year that the flood control channel that was installed in kind of the constricted area of Rona Creek. So behind Georgia's glass, extending between the high school and Ferbusco, eventually rejoining the creek around 12th Street. That was the overflow channel that was critical to make it so that the 100-year flood or realistically much smaller flooding events or high-flow events stayed within the creek and didn't flood the surrounding neighborhoods, downtown, the boulevard, areas where it historically used to. This was the first event where that flood control channel was actually activated and used. So it was designed to take flow from Rona Creek at anything larger than the 10-year event. We had a pretty significant event and, and it was overtopping there at the weir and doing what it was supposed to be doing and taking water away and keeping everywhere else high and dry where otherwise there would have been probably a foot or two of water in some spots on the boulevard on Saturday. So a, a great project. We are happy to see it functioning as designed and as intended and, and keeping everybody else dry and, and keeping the water moving. So again, with that, happy we were able to, to take care of things and continue to do good projects that have good benefits like that in the city. So, thank you much.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's exciting when you do a project and you actually see it works. Okay. We'll move on to, oh, any other comments? Okay, we'll close public comment then. We'll move to the consent calendar. We have 16 items on the consent calendar. Anybody want to pull any of them? I'm going to pull F and G. F is the police department one, and I just wanted to bring up that the K9 is having a fundraiser Thursday night at the Vets Building. It's a drive, drive-by lasagna dinner. It's excellent lasagna. Tickets can be, you call the police department, get a ticket for it and go down and pick up your dinner. Very good. And the K9 does not do it though, the officer does. But it, it's, it's a good program and it, we have, one of our K9 is completely supported by donations. So this helps keep that K9 on the job, and they do very good work. So come support our K9 Thursday night at the Veterans Building it will be. And the next one is the, let's see, J. It's the approval of commissions. And I just wanted to thank Nick Burke, Burke, did I say that right?
Correct.
Is here. He's new to the planning commission. I guess that's the right one. You're, you're on right, planning commission? New to the planning commission and looking forward to, to that. So I wanted to welcome him and Cameron to the Parks Commission. So that is all I have on those. And with that, oh, wait a minute, I guess I need to read that. We have all of the, all of the department reports. And then we've got report of dispersments, city or council review and approval of the commissions and committees, approval, approve the selection for the Community Development Director, approve a memorandum of understanding between the City of Fortuna and the Fortuna Union High School District Shared Facility Use, approve the City of Fortuna's cash handling policy, certify the City of Fortuna's six-year sewer system management plan, authorize the city manager to submit individual grant applications for regional early action planning grant programs for which the City of Fortuna is eligible, approval of real negotiator, of real, real property negotiator for the City of Fortuna concerning the locate, or property located at 624 Main Street, Fortuna, California. Okay, that's it. Do we have any public comment on any of these? Okay. See and then, then do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion approves. Now we finally are getting to city business. Our first item of business is the second reading and adoption of ordinance 2024-765, amending chapter 8.16 of the Fortuna Municipal Code to provide a revised nuisance, nuisance regulation and abatement.
Thank you, Mayor Trent. This, this first reading was presented on December 16th by our city attorney, accompanied by our police chief, and they're not here today. So this is the second reading. There were no requested changes by the council during that first reading. The proposed ordinance, oh, the current, the city's current nuisance regulations, which were last revised in 1990, are contained in chapter 8.16 of the Fortuna Municipal Code. The city attorney identified portions of the nuisance regulations that required revisions. The proposed ordinance, if adopted, revises the nuisance regulations to make the following changes. It provides a more expansive definition of conditions and conduct that constitute a nuisance. It provides an option for summary abatement and conditions or conduct that pose imminent risk to health and safety. It provides for administrative fines, and it updates the cost recovery options and rename the nuisance regulations from property maintenance to neighborhood preservation. So staff is recommending that the council introduce, or conduct a second reading of this ordinance and staff, let's see. So the, the recommendation is that the council conduct a second reading and adoption by title only of ordinance number 2024-765.
Any questions from council? Okay, do we have anybody on the public that would like to make a comment on this item? See and then we'll close public comment. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to conduct a second reading and adopt ordinance number 2024-765 and read by title only.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Roll call, please.
Ordinance 2024-765, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Fortuna, amending chapter 8.16 of the Fortuna Municipal Code to provide for revised nuisance regulation and abatement and determining the ordinance to be exempt from CEQA. Councilmember Conley?
Aye.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Mobley?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Our next one is a second reading and adoption of ordinance 2024-766, adding chapter 9.05 to article nine of the Fortuna Municipal Code to adopt social host regulations.
Thank you. As with the last presentation, this was, this ordinance change was requested by the police chief and put together by the police chief in conjunction with our city attorney. And it was presented at the city council meeting on December 16th. There are no requested changes to this, this ordinance that came in the first reading. So the recommendation is that the council conduct a second reading and adopt by title only of ordinance 2024-766. This ordinance imposes penalties upon persons responsible for loud or unruly gatherings where alcohol is consumed by or served to or in the possession of minors as set forth in the ordinance. The proposed ordinance, it will make it a violation of the Fortuna Municipal Code for any person to permit, allow, or host a loud or unruly gathering at his or her place of residence or on other private property or rented public property if such person either knows or reasonably should have known that a minor has consumed an alcoholic beverage. Importantly, if the person is responsible for loud or unruly gathering, is a juvenile, the juvenile's parents or legal guardian are jointly and severably responsible. The proposed ordinance also provides a recovery of expenses for public safety responses for repeat offenders. So with that, the recommendation is to conduct the second reading and adoption by title only of ordinance 2024-766.
Thank you. Any questions to council? Do we have anybody from the public that I can make a comment?
Good evening. My name is Lisa Olivier. I'm the current chair for Allies for Substance Use Prevention. That's related to the county. We're a private coalition. We were originally government-funded, but now we've moved into the second part of our lifespan. I just wanted to give you a little bit of primer on underage drinking. According to the CDC, young people who use alcohol are risking impaired brain development. They're up to five times more likely to develop alcohol dependence over time, and they're much more likely to engage in risky sexual behaviors as well. In this area, some of the benefits that we can see from doing civil social host ordinance like you're proposing is to, number one, impair with the parents and caregivers in order to set very clear limits for their children and for children that are around their homes and businesses. And the second one is it reduces noise, nuisance, and caregiver, and the neighborhood vandalism and property damage because if they're bored, they're getting into trouble sometimes. It decreases their access to alcohol and it deters these underage drinking parties that can be so problematic. I can only really encourage that you please adopt this. It's been very effective in Eureka. I know that Arcade is also considering it, and at some point, hopefully, we can approach the county to do this as well. And that way we can take up these unincorporated areas and bring it all in together under an umbrella. But thank you very much for considering this.
Thank you for your comment. Any questions from council? Okay, any other comments from? Okay, see and then we'll close public comment.
I'll make a motion to conduct a second reading and adopt ordinance number 2024-766 and read by title only.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Can we have a roll call, please?
Ordinance 2024-766, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Fortuna, adding chapter 9.05 to article nine of the Fortuna Municipal Code to adopt social host regulations and determining the ordinance to be exempt from CEQA. Councilmember Conley?
Aye.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Mobley?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent?
Yes.
Okay, our next item of business is inter- Okay, our next item of business is introduction and first reading of ordinance 2024-767, Amending Title 15 of the City of Fortuna Municipal Code by Streamlining the Permit Process for Electric Vehicle Charging Stations. Staff report?
Thank you, Mayor Trent. So our, our, our planner, Katie Schmidt, was supposed to present these tonight, but she is not here, and I've been working with her on these, so I'll be presenting the staff report. So, so this, this item and also the next ordinance that we have are both in response to state mandates, and the recommendation is conduct a first reading of ordinance 2024-767, which amends Chapter 15.65 of the Fortuna Municipal Code. Really, this is a result of, in 2015, the state of California adopted Assembly Bill 1236. This required local jurisdictions with a population of less than 200,000 residents to adopt an ordinance to create an expedited streamlined permitting process for electrical vehicle charging stations. The ordinance requires that a jurisdiction adopt a checklist of requirements with which, if completed, an application for electric vehicle charging, an application for an electric vehicle charging station would be approved in expedited manner. This checklist would contain objective requirements for the installation of an electrical charging station and the process of electronic submittal for, of permit applications. The content of the checklist requires the applicant to check the features of the existing electrical service. There's many things, the amperage of the service, the voltage, the connected loads, the spare capacity, and really all the characteristics of that charging station. The checklist also provides information to allow the applicant to confirm that the location of the electric vehicle supply equipment is in compliance with the city zoning ordinance. Assembly Bill 1236 also clarifies, and this is in the, the proposed ordinance, that a jurisdiction shall not condition approval of a permit for electrical vehicle charging station based on the approval of an association such as a homeowners' association. And so most of the procedures, such as electronic submittal of plans, are currently in place and comply with the requirements of the Assembly Bill. One of the things that we implemented last year was the OpenGov software platform, and so we have the ability already to do these online and comply with most of these requirements. The ordinance itself is very straightforward. It includes the definitions of, definitions of the facilities to be covered, the technical requirements and code references. And attached to the staff report is the ordinance and then also the proposed checklist. And so again, the city already has the online permitting process on board, so this would just be one more form that can be done online, much like our building permits and our planning permits are done now. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Okay, I'll open public comment. Does anybody in the public have a comment on this item? C and N will close public comment. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to hold the first reading of ordinance 2024-767, read by title only, and continue the public hearing to February 5th, 2024, to conduct the second reading.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Ordinance 2024-767, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Fortuna, adding Chapter 15.65 to Article 15 of the Fortuna Municipal Code to Provide Procedures for Expediting Permitting Processing for Electric Vehicle Charging Systems and Determining the Ordinance to be Exempt from CEQA. Councilmember Conley?
Aye.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Mobley?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent?
Yes.
Okay, and our last item in business is introduction and first reading of ordinance 2024-768, Amending Title 15 of the City of Fortuna Municipal Code by Streamlining the Permit Process for Small Residential Rooftop Solar Energy Systems.
Thank you, Mayor Trent. This is very similar to the last one, and except for electrical vehicle charging stations, this one is for rooftop solar. And I, I think this is a really good one. We've already been doing this in an expedited fashion, but I have heard from solar installers doing projects around the city that, prior to us implementing our OpenGov software, that this could take time, and they might have to wait a couple of weeks. And it's a really, solar projects are pretty quick projects, and so when people are wanting to do those projects, they really value being able to get the permitting process done quickly and not have them, them bogged that down. So this should really help that. Although we've implemented these things already, this would really just update the municipal code. So in 2014, the legis, the state legislature, legislature passed Assembly Bill 2188 mandating that cities and counties adopt an expedited streamlined review and permitting process for small rooftop solar systems. The proposed ordinance establishes that process through amendments to the city municipal code. The required streamlining features include the use of standardized forms, which are available online, the ability to accept electronic submittals, and the consolidation of the required inspections into one single comprehensive inspection. In July 2023, as I mentioned earlier, the city launched the OpenGov Online Permitting Portal in conjunction with the Solar App Pre-Approval Portal in an effort to comply with AB 2188, but we did not make the corresponding municipal code updates. The Solar App Portal portion of that conducts an automated permitting review for safety and code compliance following a preapproval checklist, and projects with Solar App preapproval will automatically be issued a permit through the OpenGov Permit Portal, eliminating the internal review times. And really what our building official does when he looks at those, he takes a look at the application and the plans and just makes sure what they've put in in that checklist actually matches what's in the plan. So it's a very quick review that, that normally just takes a very short amount of time. As I said, our, our current online permit portal is, is compliant with this requirement. A copy of the ordinance is attached, as well as the solar permit preapproval checklist that are referenced in the ordinance. That concludes my staff report. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
Just a comment.
Okay.
I think this is either the fourth or fifth item that's been brought by state legislation that's come since last January. And some of them are, like, this is pretty helpful, but some other ones are costly, there's no reimbursement mechanism, and in some of them, there is literally no way to accomplish them right now in Humboldt County. And I wish that we could get the ear of the legislature regarding some of this stuff and to make it more adaptable for small communities, rural areas, where to accomplish some of the stuff that they want us to do, we'd have to send trucks on a four-hour road trip one way to accomplish the purpose of the legislation. So that's all I have to say.
Okay, I'll open public comment. Anybody from the public want a comment on this item? C and N will close public comment. Do we have an ordinance or a motion?
I'll move to hold the first reading of ordinance 2024-768, read by title only, continue the public hearing to February 5th, 2024, to conduct the second reading.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Ordinance 2024-768, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Fortuna, adding Chapter 15.67 to Article 15 of the Fortuna Municipal Code to Provide for Expediting Permitting Processing for Small Residential Rooftop Solar Systems and Determining the Ordinance to be Exempt from CEQA. Councilmember Conley?
Aye.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Mobley?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent?
Yes.
Okay, our next item is the City Manager's Report.
Okay, so just a brief review of our upcoming meeting schedule. Our next regular scheduled city council meeting is on February 5th. Our next Planning Commission will be on January 23rd, and at that meeting, I'll just note one thing that is going to be presented is an update on the Fortuna Mill Site, and really just our approach, how the city's approaching the mill site specific plan and, and, you know, the items that, you know, the progress on the items that we're working on so far. So that might be interesting for the council and the public to tune into. We expect a lot of people to be present and participate, including some of the new owners of the former Palco Mill Site.
What date, what was that date again?
January 23rd at 6:00 at the regular Planning Commission meeting. Our next Measure E meeting time is tomorrow, or January, yeah, tomorrow, January 17th at 6:00 PM at City Council Chambers, and then our next RONER Community Recreation and Park District meeting date will be February 7th at 2:30 PM. And the next Fortuna Business Improvement District meeting is on January 23rd, 2023. And I think that the council was also queried for a special budget workshop to talk about the mid-year budget, so if you received an email from Ashley, I think we're trying to set up a time to do a mid-year budget review. No? Okay, if you haven't, you will be. Just a few items to report from my verbal report. Again, I appreciate Brendan giving the updates. I looked at a number of pictures, but we had a number of our staff. Bob Nat, our, our general services superintendent, Brendan and our crews, they all responded and made sure that they were handling things. A lot of clogged culverts and things got cleared before they could be a bigger problem than they were. So a lot of water backed up in a lot of areas, and I really appreciate the fact that we had a proactive staff that was out there ahead of time fixing these issues and rather than letting them get worse. So I'm always really proud to see that our folks are getting out there and they care enough to come out on a Saturday and make sure that they're handling the city business, and this was no exception. One of the other things, we met with a prospective buyer of the movie theater, and we're helping them identify resources and folks who could help them figure out some of the questions that they have regarding that project. So we're excited there may be some movement on the movie theater and somebody who's interested in purchasing that that's capable of running it, and so we're just trying to connect them with some of the professionals and resources that are available and, and hoping that they can be successful with that. One of the other things that we have is, that was approved is the appointment of a Community Development Director, Sherri Mead, so we're really excited to have her come on. She's going to be starting on January 29th. She made her move up. I think she moved up right in the middle of the storm. I haven't talked to her, but it was one of the rainiest flooding days that we've had lately. Hopefully, she didn't take her truck and head back down to Sonoma County, but she's really excited to start. She's really excited to work for the city. I think she's going to be a great fit. She's, she's thrilled to be working in a small community like this after working for a bigger city, in the city of Santa Rosa, so we're excited to introduce her, and I think we'll have her at the State of the City Breakfast and have a chance to introduce her there before she actually even starts work. Again, we're moving forward with recruitments and expect to have a new Parks and Recre, Recreator pretty soon. We're moving through the process. We finished the background and physical portions, and so we're just waiting a little while longer to announce that, but we expect them to start in the beginning of February, and then we have a great candidate for Recreation Supervisor that we're moving through that background process now. So kind of had a lot of turnover in our recreation, but I think we're going to come out stronger and some highly qualified staff. So I'm really excited to bring all those folks on board. It's going to be a little bit of a challenge trying to bring everybody on and get them oriented and spend a lot, all the time really to get them going with the city, but it's, it's, it's a right problem to have. The Community Development Director position, for example, has been vacant since it was put into the budget last April, I think, right before we did the budget, and we've had the vacancy, I think, for the Parks Director for over four months. So it would be really nice to have folks in those positions who can dedicate the time and support the staff in those departments that really need it. And then we're continuing to work on SB 1383. I think Council Member, or Mayor Protem Johnson brought that up, but it's, it's a really onerous piece of legislation that, amongst other things, is going to mandate universal collection, which is collection by every resident and business within the city for garbage, for solid waste, for recycling, for organic waste. And right now, we're spending a lot of time trying to figure out how to do, to incorporate some of the changes that are needed into the franchise agreement and work out fair terms with our waste hauler, and how do we, how do we get those provisions there. There's also a lot of very challenging timelines right now. We were supposed to be compliant with SB 1383. Again, they passed the legislation in 2016. It took them four years to just put the rules together in 2020, and we're supposed to be compliant, I think, within six months, which is about impossible, but we don't have the capacity to compost in Humboldt County right now, and, and recology can't get the trucks that they need soon enough to be able to do it, and then it's just going to take a while to roll it out, and so we're having meetings with CalRecycle and trying to get a reasonable timeline while we create that capacity locally. And we'll be sure to have some public outreach and education and get more information out there before this hits. But the soonest, I think, right now that we'd have the collection of recycling and solid waste is probably in July, and then recology is telling us that the trucks for organics are even further out, and it could be as late as the beginning of January of 2026. So it's a ways out there, and it's, it's hard because, again, we're getting a lot of pressure, and so I think negotiating that timeline with, with CalRecycle is really the, the big challenge. A couple of other things, there's been a lot of activity with the RONER Community Recreation and Park Districts and a lot of discussions with McLean Foundation and Yule River Valley Foundation. It looks like they're going to provide a lot of support and really help the district to put together a project that can be affordable and at fairly low cost for a really nice pool facility. And so there's going to be a decision from property owners of whether they want to see assessment in the near future, and, and this is really going to be the one chance that this community has to decide whether they want to create a pool or not. So there's going to be a lot more to follow on that and a lot more public meetings, but we're, we're just kind of finalizing what we think the structure of that would be and what some of the financial assistance would be from McLean Foundation and others. Couple other things, I had a chance to tour the new Fortuna Senior Center with our city clerk. It was really nice to see folks in there and doing their programming and having moved into that facility. They're really excited about it, and it's nice to see that project that the city supported with the Measure E dollars. I know McLean Foundation supported it, but it's great to see those folks in a facility, and it's very nice and light, and they have music programs and art programs and exercise room, and it was great to see that they, they really accomplished that goal for a group of seniors to be able to build a building that costs in excess of $2 million and pay for it. They're just thrilled, and it's nice to see the folks there using that. I think Matt highlighted the POD, the police facility, the new police facility on Newark Road, but they, they were doing some of the, they're starting to put the cabinets and desks, all which were included in there, so that's going to be a really exciting piece. Once they get the floors in, it's really going to feel like a finished building, but some of the key parts that Brendan's jockeying are the phone and utilities and getting everything you need to get power and phone up. Those are going to be the critical items as we move forward. And then lastly, I'll be working with Mayor Trent on, and Lieutenant Eberhart on our State of the City presentation, which will be on Thursday, the 25th, at the River Lodge, and that's being put on by the Fortuna Chamber of Commerce. And we're always pleased to be able to present at that event. It gives a great opportunity to share some of the things that we're doing at the city with the community, so I'm really looking forward to that.
Thank you. Future agenda items. I have one that I would like to bring forward is our sign ordinance. We ran into a little bit of difficulty with the election signs. Mike Losi and I were on the council when we changed that to 45 days, but it was not put in there, the wording of that was not exactly correct in there, so it was very, it's left way open, so it doesn't, I mean, it, it ended up 60, which included the days after, and so we need to, we need to clarify up that a little bit and, and get that so people 20 years from now know that it's the same thing that we, you know, that we said it was.
We'd be happy to bring that back, and we'll have a new Community Development Director that would be happy to help work on that new ordinance. It's one of her, her areas of, of expertise.
We just need to make things, make things when they're written, make them real clear, so, you know, 20 years down the road, they know exactly what the intent of it was.
Yeah, and, and we'll be, we'll be happy to put that on the future agenda.
Also, Ryan Plots had been looking into some of the possible court changes, law changes with regard to those, you know, dates as far as numbers, how far out you can have signs and that type of thing, so. Then I have, and then I have one other item for, on a future agenda. Coming up in March, we all will have Proposition A, which is the cannabis proposition that we will be voting on. I've read and heard so much on both sides of the issue, and I would really like to invite somebody to come in and, and give us, give the council on an agenda item, just a rundown on, you know, both sides of this issue. Mark Thurman, who is one of the co-authors of Proposition A, he has offered to come in and provide us with that type of information with regard to Proposition A. So I think it would be a good opportunity to have him come in and with an idea that maybe the council would either endorse the proposition or be against the proposition. Anyway.
Okay. So then we'll move on to city council reports.
Okay, let's go back to that, though, so to be sure to give staff direction on that, to put that on the next agenda.
So, so what I'm hearing is that the council would like to see a presentation of, on Prop A by the, by Mark Thurman or the group supporting Prop A and have the opportunity to support or oppose that?
Correct.
Would there be someone from? Would there be someone from the other side?
If the council would like to, yeah, we could ask, we could have both sides present at that if the council would like that.
Sure. That would be good.
Okay.
Do you have a question up there?
Oh. Okay. Come to the mic so they can hear you, please.
Sure. My name is Walt Wilson. I'm a member of the Measure E committee, and I'm confused. We have, we've always met at 5:30, and Merritt's current report has us now meeting at 6:00. So, like I say, I'm confused.
Thank you. That, it is 5:30. You are correct. I made a mistake. It's not 6:00.
Okay.
Well, I'm glad we got that cleared up.
So if you come at 6:00, you'll miss the meeting.
First half anyways.
Okay, moving on to council reports. Councilmember Conley?
Thank you. I don't have much because nothing's met since the holidays, but Brendan snuck out the door, but I was going to thank him also for all the work that was done during the flood event. We were driving around town and seeing all that stuff getting taken care of well before it became a problem was good, so appreciate that, appreciate the crew doing that. A good police report today, Matt, and the police department's doing a great job, so I appreciate it. Good job, Chris.
Thank you. Councilmember Losi?
I have not had any meetings since our last council meeting. I do have the LAFCO meeting tomorrow morning, 9:00, at Eureka City Hall. That's where LAFCO meets every other month. I'd like to echo Councilman Conley with congratulating the police department. Reducing crime is important, and you, you folks have certainly done that and deserve the congratulations of, of everybody. You also have the support of the community, which in this day and age for communities to support, to support their law enforcement is, it, it doesn't always happen, so we really do appreciate all that you folks do. Thank you.
Councilmember Mobley?
I just had one meeting. It was the County, Humboldt County Redevelopment Oversight Committee, and Aaron had presented a request, and we got $200,000 for administrative costs from that committee. So you did an excellent job. That's the only one I had, though.
Good job, Aaron. And Mayor Protem Johnson?
Well, I have had a quiet couple of weeks, three weeks, seems like it's been forever since our last meeting. During that time, our HCOG Fiscal Administrative Officer, who had been at HCOG for 24 years, retired, and I just wanted to congratulate her on her retirement and thank her for 24 years during which she did a variety of different jobs, all progressing up to the Fiscal Administrative Officer position. And she oversaw the funding that comes in and goes out and made sure that everything was audited for the different transit agencies, and everybody got the money they were owed, and she did an excellent job keeping track of all that, as well as a number of us here in Fortuna either worked with her or had them as our guide through HCOG, and she did an excellent job with that, too. So congratulations, Debbie, on your retirement. And with that said, we have another HCOG meeting Thursday this week, and we're looking forward to that, and I'll report out on that after the, the meeting happens. Thank you.
Thank you. And I didn't have too many city meetings, a lot of other meetings, but I did want to say I was very, very happy. For the first time in 25 years, I did not have to sandbag my business when the, we had the heavy rains. So I was so happy to see that that project is working well, and that's pretty much all I wanted to report. We do have a closed session tonight, so we are getting ready to adjourn to closed session. Our first item would be conference with labor negotiator, city manager, Merritt Perry for Employees Organization, Fortuna Police Employees Association, Fortuna Employee Association, and Unrepresented and Manager Group in ordinance with Section 54957.6 of the Government Code. And then the second item would be conference with real property negotiators, pursue Section 54956.8 of the Government Code. Vacant land at 624 Main Street, Fortuna, negotiating parties, city manager Merritt Perry for the City of Fortuna, and Ray Chisholm as negotiating parties under negotiation price and terms of payment. So do we have a motion to adjourn to closed session? Oh, any, any comments on that? C and N will close public comment.
Motion to adjourn to closed session?
Okay, we have a first and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, meeting, I guess moved to closed session. Thank you, everybody.